I'd like to call this meeting to order. Now's the time for any concerned citizen to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda.
Hello, my name is Brian, B-R-Y-A-N, Helmus, H-E-L-M-U-S. I spell my name because I'm a newcomer to Jefferson and I'll celebrate my second anniversary in the first couple of days of December of living here. Wherever I've lived though, I've made a point of trying to learn about the issues that are facing the community, to learn about the currently elected officials and about those who are seeking to become elected, because I want to be able to cast a well-considered, intelligent vote when it comes time to voting. And as a way to start to get to know more about what the issues are that face this community and how decisions are made, I attended the most recent meeting of this council for the first time. Now after that meeting, some other people, some other citizens of this city raised the issue about they couldn't hear, they couldn't understand, and asked that something be done to address that by improving the PA system. And I called and spoke with Scott about it, and I just spoke with him again, and it sounds like they have a pretty good solution or a possible solution in place, but Scott, I'd ask you to talk about that later on. And also then in preparing for this meeting, I thought it would be nice to have the agenda ahead of time, and I went online on the city website and I couldn't find it anywhere. So I called Scott and he sent me a copy of the agenda, which I appreciate. He put me on a list and we talked about how it would be nice to have it posted on the website. And I just learned from Scott that it has been, but somehow it wasn't done in a proper way, so people couldn't find it, and I'd ask you to explain that better than I know later on as well. And then the final thing that I'm raising, I mean two of the three that I came to talk about are well on their way to being solved, and I'd like to commend Scott for how responsive he was and how welcoming he was and how quickly he acted to address my concerns. I appreciate that, Scott.
Sure.
And then I also got to thinking, flowing out of the second issue, is that maybe there are ways we can improve our entire website presence, because that's a gateway portal into people who want to learn about our community, and we're going to make an impression one way or the other about our website. And as somebody who's lived in Jefferson for two years, I've made friends here, I've participated in the events in the community, and Jefferson has become my home, and I want us to make a good impression. I want good things for Jefferson, and I know all of you here and all of you back here want good things also. So I appreciate the opportunity to present my thoughts to this council. I think the individual citizen coming to present their thoughts to the governing agencies, the citizen is the most important office in a democracy, and I think it's important that everybody in government seek to remember that, be respectful of that, and honor that office, and appreciate that people come to their meetings to talk, they're taking their own time, they wouldn't have to do that. So you know, it's important to listen and respond as best as you can when people present to you. So that's what I have to say. I thank you for your time, and I know there are others who want to speak, so I'll turn the mic over to them.
Mayor?
Can I just respond to those two points here real quick?
Absolutely.
Just so, the issue about the agenda's not being posted on the website, that was true, that it, Sarah Moreland takes care of that and posts everything for us. Had posted them, oh, there's some glitch on that, she says, yeah, they're posted, they just weren't visible, they were on the backside somewhere. Anyway, got that attended to. The other issue raised after that last meeting was about being able to hear in the crowd in a little PA system. So I did talk with Sean about that, about what can be done with any, to amplify any voices, but yet not negatively affect how this livestream works. So it does have a speaker that ties into the system, from what I understand. So, and anyway, it's, this would be a few hundred dollars, a nice inexpensive way to address that, and we'll give it a try next time and see how that goes, or we'll keep searching.
Thanks. That was great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
My name's Denny Lottner, and I've lived in the county all my life. One thing I want to say is, your name placards, we can't see who you are. Well, that's nice that you turn it that way, but sitting back here, you can't see them. Maybe your room needs to be rearranged, so we can see you guys when you talk, and it'll make it more friendly to the people that attend the council meetings. Secondly, I want to talk about catering housing. How many of you council members belong to the Green County Development Corporation? Raise your hands. Honest Harry, you've got to raise your hand.
Yeah, there is.
Matt? Are you a member? Any of you other guys? Okay.
I sit on the board too.
Okay. I tried to get information from Green County Development Corporation. I wanted to know who the members were, the individual members. They will not tell me. They said that's none of my business. Ken Paxton told me that. I've tried with, I put an article in Tori's paper on her internet. I put two in the Herald asking for information on the Green County Development Corporation. I called Ken Paxton, he said it was none of my business. I sent Norm Fandel a certified letter return receipt, never got a response from him. Now is that open and transparent? I don't think so. You members, if you're a member of this catering, supporting this catering project, you should know that you have a conflict of interest. Because when it comes to voting on catering project, how are you going to vote as the constituents want? You're going to vote the way you want, or the way the Green County Development Corporation wants? I think you boys need to put your big boy pants on and abstain from voting on this if you're a member of the Green County Development Corporation. If I was your legal counsel, I'd advise you to vote for your, as your constituents want you to vote, and not be a proxy vote for the Green County Development Corporation. Amen.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to consent items.
Second.
Is that Dave? Okay, sorry. Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
New business, item A, amending code of ordinances for the city of Jefferson relating to water services, and this is the third reading.
Yep, this would be that go to state that the customer would then be responsible for the installation costs for water services larger than one inch.
This is first reading?
Third.
Third reading. So moved.
Second. Semalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item B, ordinance, amending code of ordinances relating to zero lot line zoning.
Third reading on this one also, and this is that one about, has a lot to do with duplexes, allowing the splitting of duplex properties.
I move to approve.
I'll sit.
Sloan?
Yeah.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item C, ordinance, amending code of ordinances relating to front yard setbacks for infill lots, third reading.
And this one also then, third reading of this, which basically allows the front yard setback of infill lots to be, you can go out then as far as the furthest guy out on the block. It allows the use of those infill lots then without having to meet a 30-foot front yard setback.
So moved.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item D, ordinance, amending code of ordinances by amending provisions related to fences. Second reading.
Second reading of this one, that implements some regulation of fences and then regulates materials, can be used for fencing.
I move to approve.
Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item E, ordinance, amending code of ordinances, amending provisions relating to water rates. Second reading.
This would be that water rate increase ordinance that would propose to increase water rates by 5%.
Which reading did you say that was?
Second.
Second.
I move to approve, second reading.
I will second.
Semalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item G, resolution waiving review of Rogers Platte of survey.
So this is a plan of survey, where parcels are going to be split off, it's not within city limits, but it's within the two-mile radius of city limits, so we're just waiving the right to view, so we're just going to say that we're not going to look at it, we're not, we're not going to prove or deny, so we're just waiving that right.
So moved.
Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item H, resolution waiving review of Erickson Platte of survey.
Yep, this is a same thing basically, this is not within city limits, but it's within the two-mile radius, and again, we're just looking to waive that right to review this plat, because it's within, it's outside of city limits.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Semalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item H, resolution waiving review of Erickson Platte of survey.
Yep, this is a same thing basically, this is not within city limits, but it's within the two-mile radius, and again, we're just looking to waive that right to review this plat, because it's within, it's outside of city limits.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Semalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item I, resolution accepted completing construction and approving final payment for city of Jefferson City Hall entrance improvement project.
So this is for the project completed out front in City Hall here, contract completed, all the work completed, all the punch list items, and so we are moving forward with the closeout process. This resolution accepts the project as completed. The second item, the next item also includes a final acceptance and certificate of completion. Excuse me. The final contract amount is $114,660.
Move.
Second.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Item J, approving final acceptance for City Hall entrance improvement.
So as I said, this is final acceptance and certificate of completion, signed by the engineer and me to state that everything has been completed in substantial compliance with the plan's specifications and contract documents, and recommend that the work be completed, the work completed be accepted by the owner, so.
Move to approve. Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item K, consider approval of pay estimate number five and final in the amount of $5,733 for City Hall entrance improvement project.
So for the project up to this point, we have paid 95% of the contract cost. The 5% was retainage to make sure that everything else was completed. We are now, since we've certified that it's complete and moved forward with that, we will recommend that the retainage be released to the contractor in the amount of $5,733. This will be at the end of the required 30-day waiting period to make sure there's no liens or claims made against that contractor, so we recommend approval of this pay application.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item L, consider approval of pay estimate number nine to Shan Constructors for $721,938.25 for wastewater treatment plant project.
This is for work completed through mainly the month of October. Stated in the write-ups there that a lot of this is for submittals and shop construction on the mixing systems, excavation for lift station, an oxygen basin, concrete, metals and steel for the walls, mechanical sub-mobilization, and some electrical, site electrical work, so we recommend payment for in the amount of $721,938.25.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item M, consider approval of pay estimate number two to Jensen Builders for $384,844.52 for airport hangar project.
This work is for the new box hangar out at the airport, mainly for the work completed through the month of October. The work included concrete work on the aprons, some drainage work, hangar building construction, and for the most part, the outside of that building is mostly complete at this point, so we would recommend payment of this pay application.
So moved. Second.
Semalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item N, engineering addendum number one to professional services contract for airport hangar project.
So this addendum is for work, engineering fees associated with the application for the state grant for the airport, for the additional funds that, and so once that was approved and we knew we were going to get that, now this agreement covers the extra work for working with that grant. The grant itself was, I think, $350,000, which was a 75-25 split. It was for driveway access, taxi widening, and a few other items on the site. It helped reduce the local share that will be due for that project. The original engineering was $163,700, with this, takes the total to $194,000.
Semalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item O, consider a proposal for engineering services for pickleball court project.
Excuse me, hello everyone, I'm just here, I guess, to answer any questions concerning this pickleball project. We came to you a couple, or a few weeks back, and the city has made a commitment of $40,000 to the pickleball project at this point, and we are currently in the fundraising stages of it, and have picked up roughly another $30,000 in cash and pledges towards this project, so we are pretty well on our way. We, I guess, we're looking at, or hoping that you will consider this proposal by Bolton and Mink to be our engineers for the project and make sure that...
Excuse me, hey, can the talking back there please stop?
We'd like to have you consider the Bolton and Mink proposal to engineer the project, and they're going to get things put in place. Our timeline is to have it built by next summer, so I guess this is just part of the process, and we're hoping that you'll be on board with us as we go through the process of making this a reality.
Can you tell us where the final destination is determined to be? I know there's a lot of discussion about spots around Russell Park.
Jim, do you want to, do you want to address that? Because Jim and I took a look at the landscape, and I'll let him take it from there.
Yeah, right now, we're leaning on the north side of the existing tennis courts in that area between the sidewalk and the existing aggregate trail, putting them in there.
Having a shared fence?
No.
They want to be a different...
That existing, the existing tennis court sits so high compared to the ground next to it, that we would have a lot of fill if we wanted to keep it up that high, so I think we're going to step it down and probably have to have a separate fence for the backside, but I think we'll, we won't cost significantly more because of the fence, because of all the dirt we would need to keep a shared fence, so it's going to be stepped down, and then that leaves some other areas for other improvements in the future if we want it.
Are there any other questions concerning the project?
Nope. Thank you. Move to approve. Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Semalek?
Aye.
Item P, consider facade grant application for Highland Medical Staffing at 118 East State Street.
Yeah, the city's received a facade rehab grant application for the building at 118 East State Street, and that's for Highland Medical Staffing. David Palmer, they're looking to do a renovation on that facade, that would be consistent with the other facade projects that we've done around the square. And they are asking for $38,360 from that grant, and David Palmer is here, he can come up, kind of introduce himself and tell more about what his plans are for the building.
Good evening, thank you. My name is David Palmer. My wife and I started Highland Medical Staffing back in 2017. We are residents of northeast Green County, but we kind of outgrown kind of where we're at, so we're looking for a new central spot for our company. Our goal for the building is to have a central spot for our regional employees, for not only daily activities, but also we do a lot of teaching for classes. Our primary book of business is we do a lot of hospital staffing for not only nurses and other ancillary positions, but we also do a lot of physician staffing, mostly in the state of Iowa. So on top of the facade, we're doing some interior remodeling to just kind of bring it up to our needs, and we appreciate you, your consideration.
I'll add that we had Main Street Iowa Design folks come through and do a full walk-through and try to hear some of their plans for the building, and it'll be, that's a great reinvestment in the downtown, and that building is going to benefit for the next 100 years because of, but I think the different phases you're talking about doing will happen, and it's going to save that building and keep it around a long time, so.
That's our goal.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Semalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item Q, phone system upgrade.
We would bring a proposal to you to update the phone systems, and this would include many of the, of the city locations, so it includes, it would include here, include the, include the shops, water plant, sewer, and includes the library, okay? And then it includes the rec center then too?
Yep.
We figured that also, but...
We'll see what we need to.
So actually what, we had brought this before the finance committee a couple months ago about, about doing this upgrade, and just wanted to really start with, with City Hall, and was the recommendation then of finance, that we would actually just undertake a project and do it all. So the main cost here is, is to wire each one of the outlets, so the phones would change to a voice-over IP system. So everything's still through Jefferson Telephone? The monthly, monthly cost of the system are just within dollars either way of where we are right now, so again, the cost really associated with this is to get the wiring in, and we would have Texone do this, it'd be $200 per drop with, with each of the departments then paying for their own drops. I think we would be ready to roll with it now.
When's the last time any sort of major upgrade to the communication system happened, do you know?
Long time.
I mean, it sure looks like they're about from the 80s, but would be my guess.
It's been a long time.
After World War...
Our phones are just so we can't even keep them, I mean, not have any replacements for them, so I mean, it's getting pretty, pretty bad.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
And Semalek?
Just going to the, more clearly communicate with the public department?
Yes, certainly. It does, it really does things that any phone system ought to be able to do, but our phone system can't do right now, like intercom between places, and have reliable voicemail systems, and, and everything associated with that. So it will now get us up into present day as far as our landline telecommunications stuff.
All right, move on to reports. Jim?
East Winter Way Project, we're going to be having a review meeting on Wednesday, the 22nd, after the Streets Committee meeting, to just talk about elements from the geotechnical report we received, and discuss the proposed work in extents, and make sure we're on track with what the scope was to be, and go from there on that one. GIS, the recollection for that is done. All the points should be narrowed down now and finished up, and then we have a few minor edits on the maps that we're finishing up, and then that one should be done, and that system is up and running, but everything should now be current and correct. So that's what I have.
All right, Scott?
And just, yeah, a couple things. Golf course superintendent position has been posted, so that's open, we would look to get that position filled yet this fall. Open until it's filled, but we'll have first review of applications after next Monday. Thriving Communities, got a new update from the Thriving Communities program about an additional opportunity then to interact with, with more developers, so what they'll be doing is webinars, several webinars during mainly the middle part of December, and then they invite their thriving communities to give a presentation about their development properties again. So we will take advantage of that and have an interaction with, with some housing developers again. And my last thing for you would be strategic planning, again, remember that we're doing strategic planning, so that would be next Tuesday. Staff meets with the consultant then during the afternoon, and the elected officials would meet with them. would meet with them at 5:30 then next Tuesday night.
Thank you. Dave? Roxanne?
No report.
Mark? Chad?
I don't know if you've been by the water tower area lately, but Andy Rowland has started, has footing in for two of the spec homes and for one of the fourplexes up there. Underground plumbing is also complete. I believe he's looking to pour slabs on those still yet this week. So I'd anticipate within a week to 10 days, walls will start going up on those three structures over there. So things will start to happen pretty quick.
All right. Thank you. Harry?
No report.
Matt?
Just want to mention that Nikki and Rudy Hubel were the recipients of a challenge grant, went to Des Moines with them and received that last week, which means it's $100,000 for them to go towards the legacy RE/MAX building on the southwest corner of the square there, the old Druckton Building. So again, another great example of Jefferson getting picked out of a highly competitive grant process that, you know, more success coming and just a great story for the community to be able to put another building, bring it up to life. And those apartments up there will also get some attention aside from the facade that haven't been touched in decades. So outside money coming in to help improve the community is always great. That's it.
Animal Shelter met Thursday. The middle schoolers went to the animal shelter on, I believe, Halloween. Thanks to Chad for being able to be down there. They really enjoyed their day. I think they want to do it again. I'm not sure any cats were adopted, but that's part of our secret plan for having them down there. Other things that came up in the meeting, Don Oris had said that whoever is the main contributor to the building of different things would have the naming rights. That's why it's the Rotary Centennial Dog Park. And we decided, and we hope council approves, to go with the name Community Animal Shelter. And then finally, this has been kicked around quite a bit, and I, but it may not be that big a deal in the long run, the key fob question on the dog park. But I think it shows some good government and some ways people can think. I'll just speak for myself. I didn't want key fobs, then I really did, and now I think we have a good solution without. The whole thing there is to not be fixed on one opinion, and when better information comes, to be able to put your ego aside and to go with things that are going to work for a whole community.
All right. No part? I just want to congratulate the folks that won their elections. I think we have mayor-elect here. He can come on up and say hello, don't be shy. Come on up to the microphone and say hello. All right. We're going into closed session now. We're going to enter into code 20.17.3. Take motion to open, to go into closed?
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
All right. All right.